All right, ready to start?
It's Thursday, August the 11th, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council work session to order. So the one item agenda can get motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as posted?
Second, moving seconded, is there any discussion? See now, I'll prepare the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Somebody wanna oppose, then that motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda. First up on our agendas, the council retreat follow-up, I'll turn it over to Scott and Shannon.
So let's do a quick preamble, and then I'll send this over to Shannon. So obviously, this is to confirm what we've been discussing with the council retreat. As you provided input through obviously, one-on-one interviews, through the actual full day retreat, and also a dot exercise. And we're trying to affirm that this is what you communicated as your top priorities. As your city manager, I do well when I get clear direction from the city council. And we've talked about this for a number of years, when council is speaking in unified voice, then that helps me articulate to the organization what our significant priorities are for the organization, so we can put the right resources into those priorities. And then hopefully, and we've talked about this for a couple of years too, we do need a framework when we talk about the council priorities and how we go forward. As new things come up, this can be an opportunity to kind of revisit. Is this a new priority? Should we reshuffle our priorities? And how do we fit in stuff that does come up, because they will come up? But this will be the basis on how we communicate to the community and what the priorities and what our investments are gonna be. And then I'm able to communicate and articulate that to the organization and hopefully accomplish what council wants to get done within a two to, well, two to three year period.
And just for clarification, we've talked about this, but these are 13 priorities, but not started. There's not one priority over the other.
Correct.
They're not ranked.
They're not ranked.
Right.
So that's, I'll turn it over to Assistant State Manager.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I will jump into a presentation, and we will get started.
Let us know when the chocolate comes.
Please feel free to eat the chocolate at any period of time as today's presentation. But like the city manager already mentioned, we're here to follow up on the council retreat. In the materials that were sent out to you on Tuesday night, you do have a kind of general overview of what we're gonna go over today, and then also a draft work plan that we're gonna dive into in more detail a little bit later on in tonight's events. So we'll start off budget by just having a conversation on priorities. Taking a look at the, how we got here, what was the work plan process? What was that like? I know the city manager kind of provided a brief introduction, but just, you know, for anybody who is listening, to kind of be reminded of, you know, where we started and where we're at right now. We'll take a look at the retreat prioritization survey results. So if, just as a reminder, the last thing we did at the council retreat back in April was a dot exercise, and so we'll take a look at that and then talk about how they were incorporated into the draft work plan that is before you tonight. And then we'll take a very, very high-level look at the priorities that were identified. So we'll take a look at all 10 of them, 13, and then we'll do a deeper dive. So we'll start at a very 30,000-foot level, and then we'll take us down to about a 5,000-foot level for more information. So that'll be coming with a detailed discussion, so item number five. And for that, we've invited all of the department directors here tonight to be part of that discussion. So if there are any, you know, questions that you have on the document or some of the priorities that are identified, they are here to provide, you know, some more context and answers to those questions. And then finally, we'll wrap up with next steps. So just really quickly, there is a saying, I'm sure you have all heard of it, that if everything is a priority, then nothing really is a priority. And when I often think about, you know, having too many priorities, I'm reminded of one of my favorites shows growing up, which was I Love Lucy. And this has to be my second favorite episode of I Love Lucy. So for those who haven't seen it, we're gonna pause this presentation really quickly, and I'm just gonna show you a real brief clip.
Everyone's, it said, it's a closet.
So just for some, some background, Lucy and Ethel have found a job at a chocolate factory, and this is the last line. If they don't perform this job well, they are going to be fired.
Let her roll! Wait here, somebody's asleep at the switch!
What are you doing up here? I thought you were downstairs boxing chocolates.
Oh, they kicked me out of there fast.
Why?
I kept pinching them to see what kind they were. This is the fourth department I've been in.
I didn't do so well either.
All right, girls, now this is your last chance. If one piece of candy gets past you and into the packing room unwrapped, you're fired.
Yes, ma'am.
Let her roll!
Well, this is easier.
Yeah, we can handle this, okay.
Listen, Ethel, I think this is... I think we're fighting a losing game!
Here she comes!
Fine, you're doing splendidly. Speed it up, Ethel!
I believe your first favorite is gonna be the Vitamita Vegemite.
Absolutely, council member, that is my favorite episode. So, you know, again, like the city manager kind of prefaced, you know, what we're here today is to set those priorities so that we don't have thousands of pieces of chocolate coming down the conveyor belt and myself stuffing them in my pockets and my cheeks and trying to have a presentation to the council. So with that, just kind of an overview of how we got here. So as far as the process, it started back in phase one, where we had interviews with each of you and learned a little bit more about, you know, what all of you were looking for as priorities, you know, moving forward and over the next two years. I took this information and put a survey, and then through that survey, we're able to prioritize, and then brought that to phase two, which was the council retreat, which we held back in late April. And again, as part of that, it was to have a discussion as a group over what you all identified as priorities. And then it was wrapped up with a second prioritization survey. So as a reminder, everybody was given 10 dots, and we had some rank dots, so we had the highest priority, and then the next three were, you know, kind of secondary priorities, and then the rest of the 10, which were still priorities. So as part of that, you know, something we heard during the council retreat was a little bit more information from, from staff on some of the priorities and, you know, what kind of benchmarks and particular projects could be achieved. And so that's something that we did as part of phase three of this process. We met, you know, the city managers, department directors, really assessed what was identified as priorities and tried to best identify what they thought could be possible benchmarks. So first of all, I wanna say thank you to all of the department directors for all of the hard work that you all did to get that information to me. And that's certainly something that has been incorporated into these materials that we're gonna take a look at. And so we're here, we're the red boxes right now, and the purpose really of today is to go over all of the information that we took and put into the draft work plan, and to get some feedback and assess, you know, if we're headed in the right direction, if there are things that are missing, and to have those types of conversations again with the department directors. And if, you know, for some reason, again, if we're getting towards eight o'clock and we need to schedule another work session, that is certainly something we can do. We can also get some more chocolate as well. And then finally, what we hope as an outcome of all of this is to be able to get a finalized work plan for 2022 to 2024 in front of you all for adoption here in the future. So retreat survey results. So in the materials that I sent to you all, it does have Table A, which provides all of the priority rankings. So you can see each of the items, you can see how many dots were placed on those items, what the inverted rank weight of those dots were. And then finally, what you can see in the red column right here, and I'll move on to this, because it shows it just a little bit better. In the red box on the furthest to the right is the in-draft. And so that's really to show you all where we put this information into the draft work plan. So again, if you look at your agenda packet materials, you can see Table A, and it again shows all of the dotted items as far as the prioritization went for the council retreat. But I'm gonna go over just high-level, a couple of them. So you can see, you know, for example, Table A, we had to create a strategic approach to handle future Lacey urban growth area annexations over the next few decades. And you can see in the next column over that there were six dots that were placed on that particular item. And when you inverse the weights based on the ranking, it came a score of 40. And then the in-draft shows where that is placed in the draft work plan. And that is shown through the rest of materials that were brought up as part of that prioritization.
Okay. Wait. Can you just quickly, sorry?
Absolutely.
Can you just quickly explain weight inversion?
Sure, yeah. So the whole idea being that your number one pick was worth the most, and your number 10 pick was worth the least. So number one had an associated score of like six, and then five, four, three, two, and then five through six were all weighted as one. So just to kind of give a higher score, so we're playing basketball instead of golf in, in this scenario. So not having the worst score.
Had the most support. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Absolutely. So we took this information, and again, like I said, as part of phase three, we did the city staff follow-up review. And this was really for the city manager and department directors to take that prioritization list and provide some more information. Specifically, they identified specific projects and efforts that could be accomplished within each priority item. What they believed were benchmarks for 2022, for 2023, and 2024, provided that no additional resources were available and that all other ongoing services continued at the level that they were currently provided. So obviously, we are talking about priorities, but recognizing that there are, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of things that we do for city services that are not accounted for in that priority list. Also asked to identify what departments were the leads on these projects and what type of level the city was involved at. So for example, is the city itself the lead? Is it a partner? So do we work with other entities, nonprofits, et cetera, towards achieving this goal? Or are we advocates, meaning, hey, we're using our voice as a city to help move a particular project or goal forward? Also asked to identify the total capital costs, you know, during this period of time? What potential funding sources would most likely be? And the staff time resources that would be necessary? So you'll see an account of hours, and then also that hours turned into full-time employees, what it's anticipated would take to hit those benchmarks on an annual basis moving forward. And then finally, the impacts the projects or effort would have on the community. So identifying, you know, what would be the benefits, the outcomes, and also where we've heard input from the community on the project itself. So all of this information from the department directors and the city managers were incorporated into those survey results and turned into the draft Lacey work plan. So going to the very high level, very, very high level, we'll get into the details here, I mean, just a second. The top work plan priority items that are in the draft are to craft a framework to strategically advance annexations and UGA permitting, update and comprehensive plan and review development regulations, complete Greg Cuyo Park and Greenways Phase 1A, finalize the city's homeless response plan and enhance social services, continue initiatives to advance indoor recreation opportunities, focus on RAC Phase 3 and other sport facility developments, enhance economic workforce and incubator projects and programs, continue the development of a new Lacey police department, continue focus on Interstate 5 and the Squali Bridge corridor solution, and enhance multimodal transportation infrastructure and create a welcoming physical environment for all community members. In addition to those priority items, some other priority items that came up were also to continue the implementation of the climate mitigation efforts, enhance communication and engagement efforts, and to attract and retain quality and qualified staff to meet service needs. So that's just the broad overview. What we're now gonna do is go into a much more detailed overview. And really, you know, the purpose again of the detailed overview is to have a, you know, review and discussion and dialogue. And really, what we are hoping to walk away with today is some consensus on, you know, the items that are in the draft, and if certain things need to be tweaked or looked at in further light. And then we wanna incorporate what we hear and put that into a new and updated draft for the council to consider. And finally, we'll do an overall edits and kind of quality control of the documents, and making sure that, you know, it looks okay, there's no spelling issues, and making some small minor tweaks that might be necessary.
So just a pause, have you looked at those 13 priorities? Is that within the scope and input that council thought they communicated?
I think so.
Okay. And obviously, that was in the details. As we go through each one, there'll be more discussion. But just wanna make sure as a general framework, that's the general priorities.
Can you explain top 10, and then there's three others? How that break occurred? Just from the dot rankings, or?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So those were consistently some of the ones that had higher, like, frequency in dots. And so those ones were kind of moved up to the top categories just based on that they were multiple council members' priorities versus just having a couple of high priority dots in the other ones. Thanks. Yeah, absolutely. So the first area is the coordinated and collaborative planning. And so the first section was craft a framework to strategically advance annexations and UGA permitting. And you can see that, you know, this doesn't have a capital cost associated with it, but it does require staffing resources. Funding resources from this are anticipated to come from the general fund, state funding and development fees. The lead department is obviously Community and Economic Development, excuse me. And we anticipate that staff hours on an annual basis would be around 350-plus hours, which equates to point two FTEs. So specifically, looking at kind of individual projects that were identified are annexations and UGA permitting. And you can see that there are benchmarks associated with each of those projects as moving forward from 2022 to 2024 and beyond. For future city council actions, you know, the next council action, should this move forward, that would be coming before this body, would be to review and consider adoption of future owner-initiated annexations, future review and adoption of new annexation policies anticipated around 2024, and then to continue participation on kind of regional planning bodies and elements. So with that, I'm gonna take a pause and just see if the council had any particular questions on this priority.
So review and consider adoption of future owner-initiated annexations. Is there something in the owner-initiated process right now that, that needs to be tweaked? Or re, I, I'm trying to see how?
It's a great question, Deputy Mayor. And, you know, I think first, it's just saying, you know, we're gonna continue to process them as they come in. So, you know, you can have property owners say, hey, I want to consider a new zone and bring that in front of, you know, the council through the whole, like, land use process. So just saying that we are gonna continue those services throughout, you know, 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Go ahead.
The cost estimates are not prospective, right? Because sometimes when we annex something, extending services to the new place does come with a cost.
Correct.
So we didn't calculate any of that, because this is just generally, we wanna pursue annexation, but we're not predicting the cost based on what we don't know yet.
Right, now, at the time of an annexation, that's something we would go through, depending on the size of the annexation.
John, could you bring in Grant Beck?
So I'll jump in here, since I've already had this conversation with Scott earlier. Since this was the highest priority based on the council's weighted, I really feel like we need to dive into this a little bit more, specifically by the 2024 benchmark. What I'd like to see is some little more guidance on just exactly how we're going to tackle annexing our urban growth area. What, what this is saying is we're gonna do, continue to do what Lacey's always done, which is process property owner-initiated annexations, process, you know, this isn't setting a priority. This is doing what we, this is, this is doing what we have always done and calling it a, a priority. What I would like to see, and this is something that the council has been talking about for the 12 years I've been on council. And here we are, and it's still the top council priority. And it's still not giving us a, a guideline, a framework on how we're gonna annex our urban growth area. Now, we have made some process, progress on this. Several years ago, we sort of looked at our UGA and said, okay, if we were going to annex our UGA, how would we do it? And we, we outlined some areas, okay, well, let's look at annexing around the lakes first. That makes a lot of sense. And then let's go after the low hanging fruit, that makes a lot of sense. And of course, the big elephant in, in the room is the Tangle Wall and Thompson place. How are we gonna do that? And we hired a consultant, they said, well, it's gonna cost you a lot of money. You're like, well, yeah, duh. It's gonna cost us a lot of money, I get that. Now, how are you going to do it? And so what I would like to see, and giving you some grace here, is, is a plan on how the city is gonna pursue our annexations, not continue to process annexations like we have continued the process, which is what this is telling me. Is there some agreement on the council about that?
100%.
I have a question about, related to that. It says in here that we're gonna kind of develop an annexation policy. Do we currently have an annexation policy?
We do.
Are we planning to overhaul it? Because I feel like that probably gets to what the mayor is talking about.
And, and we will need to annex, we will need to change that policy, because basically, the policy says, is if there's a cost to the city to annex it, we're not gonna annex it. Well, we, we, we know there's gonna be a cost. I mean, we don't need to go through a big, long debate on the, the, the cost benefit, you know, of, of all of this. We, we understand it's expensive to annex residential property. We, we get that, that's why we've never done it, right? But it doesn't, we still have a responsibility to come up with a plan. And, and, and I think this council agrees, if it takes 20, 30 years for us to annex our urban growth area, that's how long it takes, because that's what we'll need to do to have the staffing levels in order to provide the service we all want to provide to our, our city. But I've never seen a plan on how we're gonna do that.
So maybe a qualification. So the reason we talk about owner-initiated, because part of the policy talks about that, at least at the time when that was adopted, council was maybe unwilling to do a city council-initiated process to annex an area that the residents don't want to be part of. So it's a key policy discussion. Do you wanna annex an area where there's active resistance that do not want to be part of the city? And yes, there is also just the, the business discussion. What is the cost of service? How's it affect the rest of the city's services? And we just need to have that discussion wide, you know, eyes wide open. And, you know, to your point, if we need to talk about strategies on how to overcome some of those hurdles, what are those strategies? So again, if you're looking for more specific milestones, maybe at one point, we could talk about looking at all the properties that we have, that we have powers of attorney, to see what is the inventory. But then we do need to have some kind of policy debate. However, again, knowing what we know now in terms of just staffing, at some point, we get this, that goes into the priorities. If this is now, we wanna move this faster than, say, what is outlined, and we probably do need, from a budget perspective, do need to add a resource to make this an elevated priority.
And, and that's?
And maybe we need to have Grant.
And, and that's fine.
If I may?
Go ahead.
You know, we always get bogged down in what it's gonna cost, but there's also an underlying cost of what, of not annexing. You know, we, we continue to have subpar infrastructure, you know, put on our plate to future annexation, you know, because of the costs. So it, it, even if we don't do anything, it comes at a cost. And, and so people need to understand that. But you need to also look at, you know, annexations like the, the one we just did with the private airport, I'm forgetting the, the Chambers Estates. That, that was met with, with resistance, but the majority of them support that now, because they see the, the benefit of having better quality water and not the risk of their, of the well being shut down or anything like that. So, you know, we, when we say there's a cost of doing nothing, or doing something, there's a cost of doing nothing too.
And, and I think that's, it's, that's a really good point. We, we all are eyes wide open on, there is a cost to annexation. We, we understand that, but the, this is one thing that just, you know, it sort of drives me crazy. The, the information has been out for a very long time. TRPC has been telling this for us for a long time, that the majority of the growth coming to the entire county is going to, into Lacey's urban growth area, our billable lands within our urban growth area, which we are not currently in control of. And so who do you want be in control of that growth? Do you want it to be Thurston County, which currently is? Where do you want it to be, the city of Lacey? I think most of us agree it should be the city of Lacey. And so by doing nothing, we are, we, or we're losing all of our ability to manage that growth and have it come into the city like, see, like we, we want it to. And we know how far the county is, how far behind the county is. And it shouldn't be their role to accommodate the majority of the growth into our UGA. That shouldn't be their role. So this is the same thing, this, this is no surprise. I've been saying this for 12 years, but I've been having this conversation with you for 12 years. The council has backed me up for 12 years. And so I'm, I'm just saying, I know it's gonna take a little bit of time, we're not quite there yet, but we need to come up with a plan and a strategy to annex our urban growth area. That's what I would like to see.
So are you talking about divvying up the urban growth area into certain categories or regions? And then figuring out a budget for each region? And as long as certain benchmarks are met within that region, then we can proceed?
And the next, and the next.
And it still could take some time, but at least we would have a viable plan and be more aggressive about doing it.
Yeah.
And my concern is, we have citizens in the urban growth area that think they're in Lacey, they're not in Lacey, they're not being as well represented, because they're not in Lacey. There's a, there's a myriad of reasons why we should be more motivated to getting this done. This has been festering for a long time.
Yeah, and I guess I just want, I don't wanna be an irresponsible city manager by saying, let's have a more aggressive pot where it comes to annexation, because at some point, we do lose control, as we all know. When you start going through the boundary board commission, you say, hey, let's take Section A. Well, guess what they say? We can have Section A, but then you have to absorb Section B and C.
So a lot of that has changed through Lacey's diligence of going to the state legislature, and, and now the annexation, you know, the annexation rules have changed. If you can come up with an annexation agreement with a county, you get to bypass a lot of that. So.
Only, but I'm talking?
We need an annexation agreement with a county. That's what should be a part of this strategy.
Right, but I'm talking about irregular boundaries, I mean, you still can.
We don't have no section that deals with that issue. I know, but if, if you're working with the county, and the county, and the city agrees, this is our annexation strategy and our plan, the county agrees, there, the center of you both. There, the center of you both. It's only if the county then comes in later and says, oh, we disagree with you. That it'll go to the boundary of the word that they can totally screw that up. I did, I, I've said my piece.
I just want to point out a couple of things really quickly and then certainly want to turn it over to, to Grant for some feedback. Just to point out, you know, looking to twenty twenty four, that again, that annexation plan and policy is something as a benchmark that is set up there. And part of it, you know, thinking, and I think Grant's probably going to chime in a little bit on this is as we look to be, you know, one of the big projects that community economic development is going to be taking on are the comp plan updates. And in addition to the comp plan updates, you know, starting some of the development regulation reviews, which all require, you know, significant staff time and resources. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Grant.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. The timing that we put together in order to, to meet the kind of working it into the existing uh, resources of the department is to try to combine that as much as possible with the comp plan update. Because if, you know, the comp plan is where the annexation policies and the strategy lives. Um, so rather than take those, you know, pieces of the comp plan and do them separately and sequentially, we'd really like to be very efficient and try to do that all together. And, and to the, to the point, we need to be very thoughtful about by and large, we're responding to requests to annex. There are ways to, to do it otherwise uh, without the, the consent of the landowners. Um, but, but not always is it just tied to an annexation agreement with the county. Um, and, and could require a, a vote of the entire city, including the annexation area. So there, there's a lot to unpack there and and work with our public works department to make sure that the infrastructure, you know, we have a plan for providing the infrastructure as we annex properties. So I guess it, it's, it is a fairly heavy lift and we're trying to, to work it in with existing processes that we're going to have to go through.
So lift.
Yeah. Go, Carolyn. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Do we know where we are with the county in pursuing a memorandum of understanding about Lacy um, actually handling development processes, even though it's still in the UGA?
Yeah, it's, that's a little bit about the UGA permitting. And you see it's number eight on here. You know, I've, I've had some conversations with the county as well. And the county is very interested in pursuing this. Uh, again, it's going to be some staffing issues on our side, like it was brought up that, you know, if we did annex our entire UGA, say tomorrow, we'd be annexing an area in a population larger than Tom Otter. So I, I understand that. That's why this is so important to me. It's a big lift. It's a, and so you, we have to think strategically about it, but we also need to make some progress on it too. And you know, there is low hanging fruit. We could do relatively soon. You know, there's law power attorneys that we have. We could bring those in, you know, understand what the budget consequences would be. How, you know, do we need to hire some more police staff, so on? What's that budget? Bring that in front of the council, say, this is how much can it cost? But should we pursue it or not? Then let's have that discussion then, right? And then the next area is going to be maybe a little more difficult to do. What's the budget cost to do that? Do we, how much more police, public works, blah, blah, blah? What's the cost? Is it within our budget to handle it? If there is, which, you know, council can decide. And, and that's how you methodically go through and, and, and do this. But that's a plan, you know, that's the plan I would like to see. I, I, I think the majority of the council would.
So there's minimal cost required if we go at the pace we've been going essentially. But to Grant's point, if we wanted to accelerate, it takes work, right? The number of staff hours would grow if we wanted to speed up, if we wanted to start looking at annexing big swathes of the UGA. So when we're developing the policy, should we think of it kind of like a Goldilocks framework where here's a little bit, like we slow down, we de-prioritize this, or go with the current pace. Or if we want to move faster, what are the resources we're going to need to add to our community development division so that we can actually work on this and we don't burn out for grant?
Sure. And I think that should be all part of the annexation strategy that, that's laid out on, on what it will take to do that. I mean, I've, we've talked about this enough. I think you understand.
Right. So maybe to inform us, let's have a discussion with community economic development, find out, okay, how does this fit within the timelines of the comp update? And then what are we talking for additional resources? Because I mean, additionally, I mean, it's going to take additional time and resources to do it.
And this isn't the only two things that community and economic development is working. We're prioritizing these things.
Right.
Uh, you know, um, real quick, um, you know, you heard me probably talk about the Martin Way corridor before. And, you know, we could do a twenty year plan where every five years you take a block, starting east, west to east and go from Carpenter to Kenwood. And then next five years, go from Kenwood to Ranger and so on and so, so forth. Maybe it's not five years, maybe it's not a whole block, north and south, you know, all the, but you would get the mixture of the commercial and the residential, and you'd have a five year window or a somewhere in that fuck timeframe to figure out what, what to do next, if it's too much, if it's too little, that kind of thing. But it's, it's a piece by piece, but you're getting something done. And, and that could be an idea.
I, I agree. I think that's, that's something we've talked about for a long time, how we annex the Martin Way corridor. There's no way we can do it all at once. It makes sense to break it to over a period of time. And it makes sense to make sure the county is on our same page too, because you, if the county's fighting us on this along the way too, that makes it really difficult. So, but I think if, if we can put together a policy and a strategy and then have a joint meeting with the county and say, hey, this is what we're thinking, let's get feedback and, and have them be a partner. It's going to be a lot easier to do this on the way as well.
Okay. It's good feedback. That's half done. And we have more issues on this one?
Well, yeah, I know. I think we've already kind of gone over the UGA permit. But I think, um, Mr. Mayor, to your point, you know, what, what we're trying to do first is complete the Martin Way corridor step. And then moving into twenty twenty three, really initiating those conversations with county and city staff to establish that framework for kind of negotiations moving forward on what permitting would look like. Grant, anything you would like to add to that?
No, uh, that's exactly right. Um, the other, on the UGA permitting issue, um, the other thing we really need to get the county to do is update their, uh, the, the UGA plan, the joint plan, and update their development regulations to come somewhat close to what we're at now. There, they haven't updated their development regulations in the UGA since two thousand and three. And they're just now looking at the, uh, our twenty fifteen, uh, uh, joint plan for the UGA. So we really need them to get buy-in to the, the urban standards, if you will, um, before we would want to start implementing those.
Well, you say they're working on the twenty fifteen plan.
I'm sorry?
The twenty fifteen plan. Yeah, they're looking.
Fifteen plan, that's the one they're looking at now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the, uh, we had, we last adopted our comp plan in twenty fifteen, or twenty, or twenty sixteen. And, uh, uh, they have not yet adopted the UGA portion of that plan.
You know, so the, the, the whole thought was can, when I, when I reached out and talked to a couple of county commissioners is, was there a way that we could take over the permitting within our UGA? Which would solve a lot of problems because now we're processing those permits. Now they're.
The issue of a lack of a streamlined process for planning.
Yeah. And it solves a huge problem, right? I mean, that's one of the big problems about development in our urban growth area. It is so difficult to work with the county because they're now, their development standards are so far off from ours. They're, and so could we do, could we take over all of the permitting? There was a initial, uh, support from between some county commissioners and even the, the county manager on it. The issue is, is it's a staff issue for us. So what we said is, can we start off maybe a little bit smaller? Let's, can we start off with a Martin Way corridor? Let's see how that goes for a while. Um, if we, if we can take over the permitting for that, if, if after a couple of years it's going well, can then we expand to add other portions of that into the planning, um, for Lacey. So that's, that's why I completed the Martin Way corridor study, which is done. Basically, we just need to go over it. Um, and then can we get into, what is it really going to take to take over the, the, the permitting in that area? Because there, the county will have to adopt a MOU that says we're going to do it, and how we collect the fees and so on and so forth. So.
And, and just from a legal standpoint, they may have to advocate their, I'll say sovereignty to City of Lacey through an MOU. Because at some point, their, their representative is not the city of Lacey. So they will, they, they will have to do that. And I think they, they understand that. So.
It, it's something to be said, though, when you have private development want, like asking to be annexed so they can be, go through the permit process through the city of Lacey as compared to the county. So that is a value, even though it's more expensive. They see the value in that because it saves them money in the long run, and they know exactly what they're dealing with. Um, I mean, look at the fire department, uh, for instance, you know, so you have inner, you know, other, other different, you know, besides just private sector, you have other entities, um, wanting to do the same. That's a value.
Okay. I think we're good on the annexation side.
So, uh, B would be to update the comprehensive plan and review development regulations, which I know we've already kind of, you know, started discussing as far as kind of, you know, the timeline, what that looks like, you know, with the annexations and, um, UGA permitting. But as you can see, um, similar to A, there's no capital cost, um, you know, large capital cost associated with these tasks. But if you look down to staff hours and FTEs, this is a significant lift on an annual basis. So, you know, over four thousand, six hundred hours annually, which is over two FTEs working on these priorities. So what you can see for, you know, development regulations would be to start the conversation with neighborhood commercial. Complete neighborhood commercial in twenty twenty, uh, three, and then begin review of development regulations to help ease and implementation for internal consistency. And then with, uh, turning to twenty twenty four, really initiating and getting into the comp plan update. Um, while also looking at the adoption of, uh, new revised development regulations. Um, and that's, uh, again, you know, development regulations and that ties directly into the comp plan. So if we go down to the second item, um, you've got the develop, the comp plan strategy. Um, so, you know, knowing kind of what that's going to look like before we're fully involved in it. You know, what are we going to be doing for outreach? What are we going to be doing for engagement, uh, in planning internally, externally? And the cost and staffing associated with that. So really fine tuning that so we can, you know, have, um, you know, a successful, uh, outreach engagement and then assessment and implementation. So moving to twenty twenty three, looking at the data of who we are, what we are, um, what land capacities are, what the existing conditions are, and really, uh, working on that public engagement strategy. And then in twenty twenty five, uh, really initiating the twenty twenty five comp plan update. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Grant. Anything you'd like to add on that?
No, I, we're looking at the, uh, neighborhood commercial as kind of a, a test run to, to make sure that we have, uh, but we put together a really robust public outreach, uh, process. And we get that, that right for the bigger update as well. And that also allows us to start looking at the framework of our development regulations. Um, which, and I have to point that this has been kind of bugging me every time it comes up. Our, our codes are not um, out of date in the sense that they don't get, they get looked at, all the development regulations after every comp plan update. They don't always get amended in a big way, but we do check them for consistency with those, the new conference of plan updates. So if changes are needed to bring it into compliance with the comp plan, that does happen on a routine basis. So, but having said that, the structure of the development regulations are still very um, Euclidean zoning, if you will. So, so that's what we're going to take a look at, try to streamline the development regulations and be able to fit in the new land use policies in a different structure. Um, in a way that, um, really allows, uh, the vision of each of those, uh, conference of plan districts um, to be, uh, implemented. So the big lift right now is going to be, uh, public participation outreach, uh, with the neighborhood commercial developing that uh, strategy. And then, uh, at the same time, beginning to, uh, roll that out in next year for the conference of plan update itself. So the co- comp plan update will be a three-year process.
Uh, it's just something that occurred to me while we were talking about annexation. I was thinking to myself that, you know, if, if we know that we, when we annex, you know, a lot of residential, there's, there's you know, there's a much higher cost. And I was thinking in my mind, like, you know, is there a way that we can, you know, how much commercial do we have to, 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 to acquire to keep the residential cost from burdening us or keep it down? Um, I, I guess that would, you know, be kind of a I have to, I, I guess that would be more of a tax question, but at the same time, it would, it could also be incorporated to a strategy.
Yeah.
Some sort because we, you know, if, if we can, you know, if we, if we take on, what, a thousand houses, you know, we're, we're all, we, we all, we know that, that there's a cost involved there. But at the same time, if we pick up some commercial at the same time, or develop into you consume some commercial, we can mitigate some of the costs. That's.
Yeah. And so this is, it's a good point. I, I Okay, just a second. Um, I, I appreciate looking at the neighborhood commercial. And obviously, the reason why we're doing it is is because we've had a lot of questions around our neighborhood commercial, uh, recently. And so I think it makes sense, you know, that the one thing that we do as a council that has the biggest impact on our, our residents is land use, right? I mean, that's land use decisions is what we do. However, we're, we're not necessarily land use experts. And we don't even know the majority of what is allowed or not allowed within the different zones that are, you know, the areas that we have within the city. And so what, I, I'm hoping, and I know this can be, we do this as a part of our comprehensive plan update already. But it would be nice to have a work session, a couple of work sessions, and just bring the council up to speed on here are, here's our, here's our zoning, all our zonings, you know, keep it. This is what is allowed within the each, the, each of the zoning. And and to your point, Deputy Mayor, does some of that need to be changed to accommodate for the new growth we've seen in different areas? Should we put, should we be putting more community commercial in, in an area that currently isn't allowed? Um, you know, as we grow, some of that stuff becomes more feasible, especially within our urban growth area. There's a, there's a, you know, a ton of population going, and there's not a lot of commercial designation over there. So that means people are going to have to get in a car and drive all the way up to north part of Lacey to get to a damn grocery store, you know, when, where should we be looking at changing some of that? So we do have actually more neighborhood commercial areas with, with, with throughout our city. And that's not something we, we, we do these at our big comp updates, but that is, it's like a long process. We bring the public in, they have all this stuff, and then we pass it. Well, that was done in two thousand and fifteen. And then, you know, ten years go by where the council has no idea what's in the comp plan.
Two thousand and nineteen, what's, uh, Jubilee in that, that section out there? And we want a grocery store, and we want buses. And, and, and so, uh, the, the need can, can be there, but you know, can we accommodate, uh, some of those needs then through zoning?
So, so what I'm saying is maybe we need just a, a better update to the council on what our zoning is throughout the Lacey, throughout, throughout our urban growth area. Because we do have some say in and, and some of those, that need to be updated into our comp plan.
Yeah. So we're going to have a, a discussion specifically on any of the commercial on the twenty fifth and start that process. And I think as, you know, we talk about developing a strategy to update the comp plan, we could talk about other interim strategies in between that ten year period about how do we keep this fresh in mind of council to understand what is happening? And that's, but those are all strategies we can talk about in the future. That doesn't, you know, limit our ability to do that in the future.
Um, Scott, Edgar, do you have something?
Oh, yeah, just one housekeeping item and one comment. Uh, looking on the screen, I'm looking at slide twelve. Um, so it doesn't appear from my end that it's advancing with your conversation. The other element, um, responding to council member Miller's comment, the comprehensive Tango Well Thompson Place annexation study, which did incorporate all the residential as well as all that commercial retail. Um, listed out a net negative, uh, two to, two to four million dollars per year. So that's just, just responding to that.
It was just the residential. What would the negative figure be at that point?
Well, and so, so what happened? We had a big conversation about annexation years ago. There's this big push. We hired consultants to come and tell us of how expensive it's going to be to annex the Tango Island Thompson Place. Such surprise, surprise, it's like two million dollars, right? If nothing on the Martin Way corridor changes, but that doesn't take into account. And what they didn't take into account is if the city of Lacey is in control of it, what would there be the redevelopment ability of that corridor that could change that entire number, you know? And just, yeah, if we're going to annex it and it just sits and does nothing, why would we annex it? That's, that's crazy talk. If we, right? I mean, it, everything would change if the city was in control of that area. It would be, it would actually be markable for the first time. Then we'd just be sitting there.
So again, I, I mean, we'll, we'll revisit this, but I, I mean, at the time, we were trying to find what it would be, what is the cusp of if announced of doing that? Again, if we absorb an area, it was really the size of Yell. That's what basically Thompson Place and Tango Well meant.
Back then.
And so, and and similarly, I think there's still about seven, eight thousand residents in there. And as you know, I mean, the residents are already shopping in a retail area. So you're automatically almost losing twenty-two percent of your revenue. And then that is, that is hard to overcome. And then when you add incrementally with more population, we need more staff, we need more police, public works personnel, those type of things. So again, I think maybe the discussion should be, once we know those costs, what are those strategies to overcome that? If they can be overcome, maybe there's other strategies we need to deploy. Maybe it needs to be cost sharing with Thurston County. Cause some point you take the burden off of them, but that's, that's maybe next level discussion.
Other bench points with the county, they're very sensitive about commercial where they would get sales tax revenue.
Right.
And so
Yeah.
There's a balance to be had there.
So I would, I would submit that staff has been responsive to the priorities of council when it comes to annexation. But it is a difficult sort of chore to overcome when you see costs like that and the impact it would have on current city services.
What do you think the the uh impact would be on Thurston County? If if all of the urban growth area fell into Lacey's hands, what would be that burden on the, on the county as far as, you know, how much revenue are they generating now? It's just within the I five corridor in there.
I mean, it's gonna be, it's a huge number, right? Like, we, we know that a lot of their sales taxes coming from our, our we, I I get that. And and to say, which was so crazy, is to say that we, we took all that, we can't, still can't afford it. It's just, I'm, 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 I'm done.
Hey, this is a good debate. This is the, this is what informs the policy direction. This is good discussion. So.
Just checking for um remote participants, are you now seeing thirteen and fourteen pages? Thank you.
And just a slight point of clarification, Yellman's now ten thousand four hundred people.
There you go.
Please let me know if it doesn't uh advance uh here.
Okay, three quarters of Yell, okay?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on to a vibrant place to live, work, and play. So we've got um three identified uh priorities in here, which is first, to complete Gray Cuyo Park in Greenways Phase One. Finalize, uh second, finalize the homeless response plan and enhance social services. And third, um to continue initiatives to advance indoor recreation opportunities. So looking uh at Gray Cuyo, um you can see, you know, what the estimated capital cost is going to be, where the funding sources are anticipated. The lead departments, obviously Parks and Rec and uh Public Works. And then what the anticipated staff hours are for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, uh which, you know, you're looking at, you know, one thousand three hundred, which is just a little over a, you know, a half-time employee. And then as, you know, um construction actually starts to occur, that increases to over three thousand, which is um in one point six FTEs. So, you know, twenty twenty two, looking really to finalize um all of the reports necessary, get to thirty percent construction and design. Um going to twenty twenty three, um walking through the permitting, uh meeting that one hundred percent uh design and um identifying sustainable funding sources for Gray Cuyo Park. And then in twenty twenty four, construction and then commencing future um phases of Gray Cuyo Park's development, including, you know, phase one uh B.
See, that's, that's what our policies should look like for the urban growth area.
Exactly.
Yeah, so there should be a portion that we designated. Once we meet certain benchmarks, we will capture that on and on and on. It should be the same concept with the urban growth area.
And and I I appreciate this, this timeline. I mean, the, the only thing that's holding us upon this is, is really getting to design and permitting. Because we've already said we're going to build the first one, one A with reserve. Excuse me. So it's not like it's like, we, we can get right to building the first one A, right? We're just, we're just waiting on design and permitting.
Yeah, this is a good illustration. We're going full throttle, going as fast as possible to get this task accomplished. And then I guess I pointed, and it's still, it's gonna take two and a half years to get done, or at least two years to get done.
In substantial staffing resources, you know, especially as that construction ramps up.
Well, at least this is better news.
And since we're on the topic, you, uh, the council will get a, an update from the consultant at the October, work, one of the October work sessions, just FYI. On this topic, things are going, go along pretty well.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving to finalize a homeless response plan, enhanced social services. Um, you know, no identified capital cost that's subject to change. Um and, you know, funding sources identified as the general fund and state and federal funding. Um, you know, looking to staff hours and FTEs, this takes up a significant uh uh resources as far as hours, and this doesn't really even capture um some of the ongoing items that are working in parallel to what's provided up here under the priorities. And I'll give you an example, um you know, the uh rapid response team is a great example of two individuals who are doing that every single day. You know, picking up and cleaning uh rights of way and spaces around, public spaces around the city. And that's not something that's identified uh here in that account for hours. It is something that is identified in the back of the draft work plan as ongoing uh services that the city is providing. When we're looking at these numbers specifically, we're looking at it in what it's going to take to accomplish those tasks that are identified uh below it. So for example, you know, we'll start with the first row, which is the response plan. So, you know, continuing the work that was started, you know, back in twenty twenty and the draft that was presented to council on twenty, earlier here in twenty twenty two, looking to finalize that in twenty twenty three and then implement it. Um, after that, you have supportive housing acquisitions, so really exploring what options are available in the community and ways to leverage partnerships um to provide those types of acquisitions and continuing to implement our affordable housing strategy and other, you know, supportive housing opportunities as they present themselves. And that continues, you know, through twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Uh, social service plan, um, you know, starting in twenty twenty two, working to create a more comprehensive plan for the city's social service provisions, um and really emphasizing a, you know, transparent uh process moving forward for all of our contract services um that are provided, funding for social services. Um finalizing that plan in twenty twenty three and um also taking a look at surplus, you know, city-owned properties that might be something that we can partner with service providers to really leverage to meet um housing needs in the community. And then really implementing that plan.
You know, as you, as you talk about um surplus properties, you know, I can't, my mind just instantly thinks how well the reserve actually worked out. Um, you know, as a senior subsidized housing uh situation. Um, and you know, it, I, I didn't know that we had that many people who needed a subsidized senior housing situation, affordable living place, um because it filled up before. It, it just filled up so fast.
Yeah, there was a waiting list.
Yeah, and I know that it's like eight hundred bucks for like a, you know, one, a two-bedroom, I think is, is, yeah.
One bedroom, two, yeah, it's, it's somewhere.
Pricing is, is amazingly good. And I, I didn't know if those guys might be interested in doing that again or um, did we have the, you know, the space to, to recreate that? Because apparently it, it's, it's, we're in dire need of it.
And Deputy Mayor, that's exactly what, kind of looking at the inventory, right? So knowing that not all parcels in the city are going to meet every single need that might be out there, that's a huge, you know, multi-unit um development, and that might not be the most suitable or even, you know, based on our zoning codes allowable, you know, for some of the smaller parcels we have. So really, this is going to be our opportunity to take a look at our inventory and see what would be the best fit for those particular parcels and then work with our partners in the community to see what might be solutions that can be provided on those parcels.
Yeah, cause I like the fact that we, we get an empty building and and people are instant, instantly interested. Um, so, you know, it basically, we're, it's a desirable location, place to be.
Well, and to, to your point, you know, to really think outside the box, is there, is there a way that we could help? Do more of that, right? I mean, um, they got that property for a, a, a pretty decent price and then went through this really long process to get the financing through the state of Washington to make that happen. Um, but, you know, is there a, some way that we could look at um property that could be for sale, that we could um maybe sell off some surplus property and help purchase it? And then, you know, help meet some of these goals. I mean, that's the sort of thinking outside the box, actually, make, move the needle on some of this stuff. Robin and, or whoever, yeah.
Well, this is, this is related and adjacent to this, but yesterday at Regional Housing Council, it, it is clear now that we're getting twice as much money from the state commerce um as we thought we were going to get. It's going to be thirty-seven, thirty-eight million now, and we had been told nineteen million. Plus, there's going to be money, so this will pay for purchasing a motel that will be um eventually become permanent supportive housing, but it'll be transitional going. And it will pay for two years of operating costs. It'll pay for five million dollars worth of rehab. We don't need to use any of our ARPA money or local money for those projects. So where are we with ARPA funds? Because we've got to commit those in
Pretty quick.
Pretty quick.
Yeah, twenty twenty four. Yeah, and and what my sources are telling me is you better commit it like now because the, the federal, federal government's already looking to pull some of that stuff back on communities that haven't spent it.
Right. And so, you know, it takes a while to expend it. And so I, I'd like to schedule some time to look at that and, you know, revisit our priorities there.
Sure.
I was just gonna make the point that obviously all of these priorities are interconnected, right? But when we talk about updating the comprehensive plan, I really think that making sure that we have enough places to build housing ought to be a priority as we look at whether or not zoning makes sense. Right? Places that used to be zoned low density, we ought to take a look at those. Places that are neighborhood commercial, is there an opportunity in some cases to review that zoning and shift it from neighborhood commercial to residential?
Or mixed use, right?
Or mixed use, that'd be fantastic.
I mean, yeah, we're, we'll go through our neighborhood commercial update here pretty quick, but you would think you'd want housing available in that as well.
So the last item on there is the community development block grant entitlement community. So um looking in twenty twenty two, to really finalize our twenty twenty project and determine what twenty twenty three project would be, since the city of Lacey will be receiving um funding in that year as part of our uh Thurston County uh group. And then looking in twenty twenty three to start creating a plan and forming necessary engagement to become a standalone entitlement community. There are certain things that, you know, if the city is to pursue that, that needs to happen and get in place before we can actually become an entitlement community. And so that's going to require, you know, significant uh staffing and resources. With the idea that in twenty twenty four, that that program would be, you know, well into creation, um the plans would be adopted and that we would continue to manage community development block grant funding.
Grant had popped on camera, wanted to defend something.
Grant, did you have something to say?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on to um Strategy E, which is continue initiatives to advance indoor recreation opportunities. Um, as you can see here, the estimated project cost for the various projects is um over forty million. And that's um the city itself would serve as a partner uh and advocate in, in this particular role and that there would be funding from the general fund and state funding. Um, so some of the projects that are identified within this strategy specifically are continuing to work on the uh Young Child and Families Center. So, you know, really, we finalized that MOU with the partner entities and start that financials uh feasibility study. And then moving on to a second MOU reflective of the outcomes of that study. And then, you know, based on what that MOU and that study say, really determining what post twenty twenty four steps are at that point. Uh Museum and Cultural Center, so uh working on a strategic uh and funding plan, um implementing that plan and then continuing to work towards uh creating uh Museum and Cultural Center with that plan in mind in twenty twenty four. Um, working with the Nisqually Tribe on a collaboration, so starting conversations at the council and city staff levels here in twenty twenty two, determining, you know, what kind of interest there is for both parties in twenty twenty three. And then based on those conversations, you know, seeing um what would be the next steps in twenty twenty four. Uh, the fourth thing identified is an indoor sports facility. So again, continuing to meet with uh partners, right? Uh, in twenty twenty two, finalizing agreement with partners in twenty twenty three and then really moving on to planning and design twenty twenty four. And then finally, um the fifth one is private recreation. So really continuing uh ongoing economic development efforts, including uh marketing retention and expansion initiatives uh to bring more indoor recreation, uh private indoor recreation into the city in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and twenty twenty four.
Sounds good.
Just real quick check, how are we doing on chocolates?
Okay, always use more chocolate.
So maybe a throw one.
On, on the Nisqually Tribe collaboration, are we, are we kind of looking, are we talking about gateway? And how that's gonna turn out? Or are we just talking about, you know, Nisqually Tribe collaboration as a whole?
So there has been some discussion about this or potential partnership. Um, when we did the indoor facility study, there was a, an idea that we need to find partners and Nisqually and the tribe was identified. So, you know, potentially it could go on the Quaymoo's property or Gateway property that was been a discussion point or someplace else. But I think the idea was, could they be a partner? That still needs to be explored and examined if that's actually going to go forward.
So that's essentially, so it's, there's a number of things that we, I, I see there's a number of irons in the fire that, you know, not quite fully developed yet, but there are ideas that we're pursuing. And I think if someone, you know, if one of them advances, we need to be.
The, the tribe is very interested in, in that. If they're going through their own process right now and we're hoping to uh update the full council within the next sixty days, or ready, sixty days or so on, on the, sort of the next steps of all that.
Can any additional comments?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. A lot of irons in the fire.
All right, well, moving on to a vibrant and diverse economy, uh two uh priority areas, which uh first is to focus on RAC Phase Three and other sports facility developments around the city. And um G is to enhance economic workforce and incubator uh projects and programs. So looking at um priority item number F, so looking first at the RAC Phase Three, you know, continuing to do research on uh PFD and funding, establishing a timeline here in twenty twenty three for that phase three development and then establishing a concept plan for the development itself. In twenty twenty three, really finalizing uh PFD research, a timeline for moving forward with Phase Three and determining what types of uh studies might be necessary in order to.
All right, Mr. Redd, you need to interrupt your thought.
Public facilities district. So reason why this is on there, it's how we built the rack to begin with, along with the Chiltsu Sanzon Museum, the PFD. Um currently, there is a split between Lacey and Olympia. We're hoping that split continues because the state legislature expanded it um and allowed us to go back out to reissue debt that the state will then be able to pay for off a portion of the sales tax dollars that comes out. That's how it's, the PFD is funded.
But, yeah, so we have the potential for another fifteen years. Um, I think the timeframe is at twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. But again, we have to do that when there's still debt existing. Um, but that would allow us a funding mechanism to do the capital for Phase Three of RAC. So it's, I mean, it's exciting that we can actually have something like that.
We have a funding mechanism, but it sounds like the funds are earmarked.
Yeah, do those dollars accrue in some?
So.
So there's an existing PFD now that does not expire up until twenty twenty seven. What, what this does, original PFD was set for twenty-five years, but the legislature said you can do it for another fifteen years. So it's just debt remaining on the existing PFD facilities. As the mayor mentioned, we have two, one's the rack, one is the hands on children's museum. So, but we're still paying up debt on the current phase of the rack. Um, at some point, we need to have a discussion, what's rack phase three look like? You know, what is the cost of that? And then have a discussion about implementing debt to take advantage of that legislative authority.
So is that some kind of agreement that was made because the the hands on is in Olympia and the the rack in Lacey, and that's how that?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a long. Is an outcome of um, Seattle Mariners, talk about baseball. The PFD, at some point, the city said it's not fair that Seattle or King County is getting the benefit of PFD, it should be um, given to entire state. At that point in the early two thousands, um, everyone vied how to get PFD dollars, and so they formed PFD districts. Cutting through all the stuff, there was a long journey, but we eventually ended up with the rack and the hands on children museum as being the PFD project. For the capital area, public facilities district. And so we have a standing committee with representatives on that board that oversee the income that comes in and where it gets dispersed.
Yeah, and so the whole, the whole, so are, we're gonna pay off our debt. And and what happened though is during the recession, everything slowed down, and there's this big worry that, geez, all the sales tax dollars. That we thought we're gonna get, aren't, we're not gonna get. So the state said, okay, we're expanding for another fifteen years. Well, that's what that's doing for us is saying, okay, if we can issue more debt. The state, right?
Yeah.
And if we can agree, we work out with our exist, our existing PFD structure. Those are some serious dollars that we can then use to develop the next phase of the rack. And so that's what we're trying to set here is. How how much will the next phase of the rack cost? Can we issue that debt? Can we all agree that this is for the region, the existing structure is gonna stay the same? Because I'm sure that the, there's some, yeah, we're we're working on it, but we have a funding mechanism to to build out the rack, the next phase. So.
Something just to point out on that, so if you look up at the estimated project costs, I just wanna point out that um, there's uh, three hundred thousand that's listed there. But that is for planning only, not the actual construction or costs of uh, the rack three or any other uh, en- enhancement to sports events. Um, there is additional kind of estimate on what the um, Saint Martin's University Baseball Stadium would include. But I just wanted to highlight that that three hundred thousand is not including any development in the future, as we're we're talking about. And debt service.
Yeah, and it is an estimate, I'll add.
Right, a- absolutely. Um, so moving on to the next item that's listed is uh, the Saint Martin University Baseball Stadium partnership. So um, continuing to meet with Saint Martin's University, determine if that interest is is there in twenty twenty two. Working to execute a uh, MOU in twenty twenty three and starting that planning and design. And then continuing that into twenty twenty four with um, construction anticipated in in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four, should that move forward. Uh, the next item that's listed is uh, enhanced sports events. And this is really about, you know, getting out to uh, individuals who put on events to come to Lacey and put on those events. So really taking advantage of advertisements of what we do and the facilities that we have and what's available to try to attract people to come to, you know, the rack. To come to Rainy Vista, come, you know, set up tournaments in various places that, you know, maybe haven't supported tournaments in the past across the city. Um, and really as part of that, providing um, you know, more education on LTAC dollars and what LTAC dollars could do to help enhance uh, sports events here in Lacey. So that's in twenty twenty two, and that continues into twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Jen, anything you'd like to add?
Just that we do have some uh, sports groups that are super interested in coming to the rack. And they will likely be applying for LTAC, LTAC dollars. Couple of groups, local rugby group and uh, uh, soccer club. So, excited to see how that pans out.
And I definitely think, I definitely think we need to continue to build off the success of the rack. It's, it's amazing as we're getting back into the sports and everything else. Um, you know, if we don't maintain that this is a top facility, you know. It's really important that we do that. Um, expanding to the third phase of the rack uh, is definitely something that we we need to do.
Do you think scaling up is gonna lower cost? Maintain.
Well, like, I, no, no.
It's also an increase.
Yeah. You know, and that's the one thing that um. We still do need to talk about, it's great that um, we have potentially have the money to build it. But then we still have to maintain it and staff it and everything else like that. And so that that is an ongoing cost and expense.
Cause we're, we're trying to get to the point where it becomes self sufficient one day, potentially.
You know.
Still a.
Probably won't.
A dream that's not gonna.
The way, the rack is uh, also serves as a, you know. Uh, it's, it's actually, it's actually considered a neighborhood, a community, and a regional park. So it has that, you know, it's got a destination facing component, but it also has that um, community facing component. Uh, but with the rack phase three, that is a smaller property, I mean, it's twenty six acres. Um, the current acreage is sixty seven acres, and part of that is that public facing. And so um, I think, you know, being conscious of what goes into the rack phase three and looking at that. You know, revenue versus expenses and um.
So at at ninety acres and X amount of fields and and X amount of parking and X amount of hotel dollars and tax dollars from. I guess we, we don't really get to quantify all of that stuff. We just really get to know what they paid in fees for the field versus what we paid in maintenance for the, for the place.
If I can, you know, we need to remember what if the rack wasn't there? You know, you you wouldn't have half the hotels there, probably Costco was accelerated uh, being built there. Um, you know, the impact of it not being there is much like uh, you know, the port, you know, what if we didn't have the port? What if we didn't have JBLM?
And uh, the the visitor and convention convention bureau did do a economic impact analysis of the rack. And it's by far the biggest impact. So the money, money it brings in um, to the community. And then the thing is, is we always keep talking about the the rack and what it will pay for. We don't make the rest of our parks pay for itself, we don't make Rainier Vista like, what's it cost to make Rainier Vista pay for itself?
I see a nice place to live.
Yeah, yeah, I, but I I guess what I'm saying is, we don't really get to look at the dollars that it produces in hotel stays. And when we're looking at the balance sheet.
Right, I see.
We don't get to see the hotel stays, we don't get to see the direct that it has in all the restaurants, we just get to see, they paid this much in field fees, and we paid this much to maintain.
To maintain it, but consider this, so if it's twenty six acres. And um, you consider that we turn away half of the people that wanna use, the groups that wanna use the baseball.
Yeah.
Complex, so just if you look at just duplicating that baseball complex part of it. Um, and that's the part that generates more revenue.
And that's a great. If I may jump in here. We should, we should, somebody should do a study on Bucknell Field being closed for the last six years and what impact that's had. Cause that was very successful.
We are incorporating technology to help us kind of track that a little better, to see what kind of a financial impact it has on the community. When you have different events, so there is a way that we'll be able to track it a little more accurately.
Well, we also built in some stuff into the the new LTAC app, or I mean, uh, application as well. So I, it was, I didn't mean to take us offline, I was just.
But I think what you're saying is, when we're looking at the city budget, we're just looking at expenditures and revenues. But then there's the economic impact to the community, to the business community.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's a different.
Cause scaling that up is going to help, yeah.
Yes.
Indirectly comes back into the budget before those sales staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I mean, we, I think we covered it.
We're on like point number three or something.
I mean, on paper, the rack only covers about forty percent of the expenses through fees. But I mean, you've, you've already said about us that the impact of the overall economy. You know, there's various numbers, you know, every dollar invested brings back ten dollars, not up, no, that exact number. But I mean, there's clearly a different economic impact than what we have.
Like I said, the VCP, they have, they have, they've branded for us, and they'll tell you, you know, per tournament, what it's actually brought to the, the, you know. Yeah, they came and did a presentation for us. On the G.
Right, the G, so.
We have a couple of extra pieces, so. Um, so G, enhanced economic workforce and incubator projects and programs. Um, so you can see that the total estimated cost is over a million dollars. And that to be estimated um, hourly um, for for staff is gonna be over two thousand two hundred annually. Which is over a four, nine, four years. So couple of items that are identified in here, uh, first is just continue our economic initiatives. So, you know, we have our food drop plaza, um, and continuing to do enhancements there. We've got the biopop business program and other programs that might be developed to help um, you know. Under economic initiatives, just to continue to do that, enhance those programs through twenty twenty two uh, through twenty twenty four. Uh, workforce programs, uh, develop a workforce academy curriculum uh, in twenty twenty two with some partners. And then establish an agreement to uh, conduct stakeholder uh, engagement in twenty twenty three with those programs. And then in twenty twenty four, promote uh, training opportunities and launch the first cohort of that workforce academy. Uh, moving on to the maker space, um, expands the maker space to accommodate the equipment purchased through the EDA grants. Uh, continue to provide the classes and training there. Uh, moving into twenty twenty three, complete that expansion and continue to manage operations. And then looking into twenty twenty four, finding a sustainable future for the maker space moving forward. For incubator projects, which is the final uh, task here, is to work with SMU to identify, you know, uh, the needs for an incubator here in the community. And uh, really work through that partnership in twenty twenty three to develop a business launch program, and then in twenty twenty four, start that program.
Great.
Where in that building that we bought with the port out up in northeast? Where that fits into the sanctum baiter?
Yeah, that's um, that never took fruition, so we're, our hope was to kind of make um, micro warehousing or and new startup. And then um, you may remember that the port maybe had a different vision for their building they bought out there. And I think there's still discussion about what they would do with that in the future, if they want to sell it back to the, the open market, and I'm quite sure where that stands. So you're right, we had these initial discussions about how do we do an industrial incubator. Um, but with that, the, I guess those, that discussion initiation is kind of stalled at this point. I think it's still a good idea, I just don't know if we have a a project or site to make that happen.
Or decides to sell the building. Didn't we invest in that?
We did. Uh, we put money, we put two hundred fifty thousand dollars aside, if I recall right. And we were going to help people like figure out the power, if any, like base repower or maybe offset some rent. So it'd be a less hurdle of actually going to one of those spaces. Cause there, it does seem to be, there's a lack of, say that five thousand or maybe twenty five hundred square foot space to do a welding shop or something like that. Um, but I think they're fully occupied, so that was some of the hurdle, and so we just never had the space to actually execute that. No, no, that building is, yeah, I think they're collecting rent and actually it's, you know, meeting their needs. But again, I think it's a good idea, I just don't know where we would.
Where are we at on our list of thirteen?
We are halfway there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's, let's roll through these and see if we can.
All right, so H is continue the development of a new uh, Lacey Police Station. Um, so as you can see, the estimated cost for this project is over forty million, uh, with anticipated funding sources from a general fund or bond. Um, staffing resources, um, almost close to a full time employee uh, per year uh, would be devoted to this project. So in twenty twenty two, you know, finalizing the program uh, needs for this building, working on thirty percent construction design. And, you know, um, continuing public information campaigns as well as finalizing the purchase of the property. Moving on to twenty twenty three, uh, finalizing the financing plan, acquiring building permits and really starting uh, construction with the final design. Um, completing, you know, all necessary uh, land use permits as well, such as a boundary adjustment. And um, then in twenty twenty four, commencing with construction with the idea that uh, building occupancy would occur sometime in mid twenty twenty five.
Don't see where the public tasks can be in that, is that the financing plan?
Yeah, I think we still need to sit down and figure out how how best to finance this, so that's up for discussion still.
So are you considering not going on to the public?
I think it's a consideration we need to. So that that will be part of that discussion about how we find less.
All right, then we'll uh, move on to I, I'm not seeing anybody uh, raising a hand. So that'd be continue to focus on Interstate five in Nisqually Bridge Corridor. So in twenty twenty two, uh, finalizing the Pell Study, uh, continuing that uh, with the states uh, and federal as a funding focus. So really prioritizing that in the agendas, and that would continue, you know, uh, throughout this time period. Moving to twenty twenty three, continuing the NEPA study that's necessary uh, to move the project forward. Uh, with the idea that this would be finished in twenty twenty two, and then sometime construction would occur in twenty twenty seven. The one thing I wanna really highlight about this project is, you know, the estimated cost is over five billion. So this is obviously a federal and state project. The city's role is more of a partner and advocate to make sure that this continues to be a high priority at both levels. Um, so really working with our state delegation and our federal delegation, keep this front in mind, see what funding sources uh, might be available. In addition to working with partners uh, to continue to pursue funding.
The tribes are big partners here too. So, and my, matter of fact, the invitation was just uh, given to this council, if we want to go out and uh. Go out on a little boat ride um, with the tribe. Um, they're gonna set that up for sometime in September, they'll take us out on the river to show you just exactly what's going on. It's, it's amazing how much that river has changed, and it's just a, it's not, if it's a wind, the flood's gonna happen and and rip out that. Freeway, so it's like, it's getting really, really bad.
Yeah, from what uh, Mark Daly was saying, we have like a, this, I have, section of I five has some type of an emergency designation.
Yeah.
With the Fed.
Great.
All right, well then we'll move on to J, which is to enhance multimodal transportation infrastructure. And create a welcoming physical environment for all community members. Um, you can see the estimated project cost for this is over thirty two million. Um, and that this is a uh, big public works uh, a project and priority. And it would require, you know, a lot of staff hours equating to, you know, over eight FTEs. So in the draft work plan is actually um, a, a lot of projects, and I don't intend to go over every single one of those tonight. But the idea being that you can really see what is part of the transportation plan that Scott Aker and his team are working on uh, through twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. Um, and I just wanted to draw attention that the last column um, on that table says community impact. And it really kind of talks about some of the multimodal uh, enhancements that would occur. In addition to how it would make um, a more welcoming uh, physical environment for community members. So you can see the list of projects um, is quite extensive. Uh, in addition, there are a couple of um, other not um, road transportation projects that are included in there. That I just wanna draw a quick attention to, which would include some of the art plan projects, uh, as well as some volunteer projects in the city. All right, we'll move on to um, K, which is continue implementation of the climate mitigation efforts. Um, the estimated cost for this is about two and a half million. Um, and it uh, is anticipated that collectively it's going to be over one FTE. Uh, as far as time that would be working on this. Um, a lot of that work would be done by the Community and Economic Development Department, in addition to the Public Works Department. And again, a table is provided here on page uh, thirty nine that talks about some of the projects. Uh, that would be part of this uh, priority area, including um, continuing to incorporate recommendations. Um, from the TCMP into Lacey Plans and Developments. Um, and then also uh, energy efficiency audits and upgrades. And the, really the conversion to uh, electric vehicles as part of the City of Lacey fleet, uh, you know, through twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four.
Are, are we gonna, on the, on the one point one FTEs, are we gonna actually hire someone and then designate them? To help us implement our plan?
So in the budget, we have a half FTE. So currently, um, we've been trying to piggyback on existing programs and see if we can actually accomplish the same goal without having to do that. We're still working on it right now, no, Grant may have some additional input, but that's the initial.
That's been the one thing, it's like, uh, it seems like other jurisdictions have dedicated staff and and we do not.
Dedicated staff person on climate change.
Yeah, I mean, I would say we have dedicated staff in terms of their attending, but we don't have a sole person dedicated one to that issue.
Grant is nodding.
Yeah. Let's back it up, Grant, there. Grant, do you have any additional input on that issue?
Uh, no, other than to, as the designated, designated staff, um, to it, you know, we're, we're not able to. Give as much attention to the regional efforts and the Climate Action Steering Committee with some of the other, our partners jurisdictions.
Well, Grant is so awesome. Why would we want to tie him down to just one specific role?
That's what I love.
Well, I think maybe there's a discussion about that in a. Or our budget, budget time discussion plan that we now have this company. Yeah, and I think, uh, we owe counsel an update on the initiatives that we talked about, especially the grant programs we've discussed. Absolutely. Some of the white papers that the regional, uh, body is dealing about, um, climate initiatives. So I think we're due for that. I'm back. And I'm, I'm ready to get going on our, our grant program. I mean, I don't. I know it, at this point, it's, it's gonna take staff, but doing energy efficiency audits and getting, uh, doing a grant program to help people can. Put in, uh, you know, EVs or help them, you know, all the things that we've been talking about with. Just a matter of time of finding the staff resources and, and doing the program, right, at this point? It is, but for an example, let's say PSCR has a, a window of. You know, upgrade program and they already have a mechanism to identify the people that need it. And all we'd have to do is fund that program and have people that would administer it. So I think that's what we're trying to explore. Yeah.
And, and Hans Shepherd, our senior planner in long range, has already done that gap analysis. And is, uh, spending quite a bit of time putting those programs together to bring to council to review. So progress is being made on that front.
Great. Thank you, Grant.
All right, so moving on to L, uh, which is, uh, enhanced communications, uh, and engagement efforts. Um, so, you know, there are a couple of, um, projects that the city has identified as part of the communications plan that are gonna require, um, some funding, and so you see that identified. In the estimated project cost of a quarter to a half million dollars, um, and this will require, you know, substantial staff hours, um, so approximately. Uh, just a little over two full-time employees per a year. So some of the items, um, that we're looking to do are listed in the table, um, starting on page fifty-two. And again, these are things that are identified in the communications plan. So for example, and I'm not gonna go over all of them, um, are, um. The Lacey three-one-one system, making it more robust, having an internet and a document management system, in addition to doing some additional outreach through surveys. Um, creating a language access policy and creating, uh, one, uh, marketing and branding, uh, consistency across the organization. Uh, in addition, adopting a diversity equity inclusion strategic plan that includes a community connectivity analysis.
Great. What, what letter are we on?
M. We are on the very last one. We've made it. Here we are. So we've got M, which is attract and retain, uh, quality and qualified staff to meet service needs. Um, and again, this is a project that is going to require, you know, um, some, some, uh, capital costs as identified here of a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, it does require staffing resources at a level of almost one FTE. And so looking at the table that starts on page fifty, it identifies some of the big projects that human resources is going to be having, uh, going on in twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. Including assessing and improving recruitment lifecycle process, enhancing outreach efforts to local schools. Um, completing non-represented, uh, position compensation studies, uh, continuing labor management relations and performing a comprehensive benefit study.
That's awesome. I'm glad to see that because the, the, one of the subplots or the themes of this entire thing is that we are understaffed. Uh, and, you know, need a lot of money, but. Primarily is that, you know, a lot of this stuff is gonna take a lot of full-time employee hours that we are kind of lacking. To fill some of that, so, um, none of this happens without it. And so I was really glad to see this be right there on that list. I mean, uh, when it comes right down to all these priorities, it comes down to, do we have the staff to implement that, right? I mean, that's what, yeah, all comes down to. Um, and so, and we, we've been running this, like the lean mean machine here for a long time. I, I do think, um, and I hope you know this, Scott, that the council's been very supportive of you, making, you know, sure that you, the city has the resources. To implement our, our priorities and. We, we, we haven't hesitated when you come and ask and say, hey, we don't, we need another person and, uh, here, you know. I think we've always been very supportive of that, and so I think we will continue to do that. I, I know it always comes down to our budgets looking, but, you know, we, we've been running that great budget for, for years now. Now it's. It's my opinion that we start implementing these priorities as, as quickly as we can, but we're, we're not gonna be able to implement them even by the twenty twenty-four. Guideline here, in my opinion, unless we probably add a few more key people. Obviously, look at the departments here, who's, who's responsible for the majority of this. I mean, Rick's department. It's gonna need some help here. Um, you know, parks probably need some help, but works, you know, probably need some help. Of course, we need to continue to, uh, recruit, um. Our, our police and so.
Do, do we actually have a recruiter? Either on city staff or somebody that, uh, we contract with that tries to help us fill in that void?
Yeah, we do. I, I would like to point out, and I do appreciate the council's support of adding staff, and that's been very clear, and I appreciate that. But I'll just point out, I mean, we have been adding staff, and so just going to twenty twenty-one, we were at two hundred ninety FTEs. We're now about three hundred and twelve. I mean, so, you know, we have added staff. Now granted, we're growing population, we have other more needs. Council has priorities, we're trying to meet those. But also need to just recognize some things that are going on, and I think you would appreciate either in your own business or your own organizations. We are having this issue too, where we have right now still thirty positions that are on, um, that are open within the city. So even though their budget, that's great, we still haven't had those filled yet. We're also seeing dynamics in the organization where people are brand new to the city. And so, you know, we talk about ten-year and institutional knowledge. And you lose a lot of that capacity. And so, yes, we've filled some of those positions too, but it takes a while for someone to get up to speed. And start truly making impact on the organization. So, you know, it's gonna be a while before we see the true benefit of adding the, those new employees to the organization. And so I think you're seeing some of that impact, and I think the organization's feeling that constraint too. So one of the things I, I kind of want to throw in here, just because I just went through a, a week, um. Um, with the National League of Cities, uh, talking to the leadership group. And we're, all the cities were talking about what are your major. You know, priorities, what's going on in all of your cities and to a city. From everyone that was represented there, uh, you know, probably the eighty to a hundred different cities that are represented. Every single city out there. Is struggling to find employees, just like. It's right, it's county, it's state, it's, it's us in the private sector. Um. And so now that we're starting to look at strategies, like, okay, what, what's going on here? What, why is it so hard to fill some of, some of these positions? And I'm sure Lacey will fall right into sex and category where, what cities and. States and, you know, what typically done is put in a certain amount of school requirement, right? You have to have a bachelor's, you have to have bachelor's plus this, right? And, um. What they're finding out, though, is that most of the job training that happens didn't happen. When you got a four-year degree, that was just something we did because we're. There are so many different applicants, you want to make sure you're getting qualified people. Oh, times have changed, right? And, and now there are so many people that have actually active experience. That they didn't go on to a four-year degree and get a master's, but they've now spent ten years in the field that we're trying to recruit to. And the truth matters is, oh, most of what they're gonna learn is on the job anyway. So why do you have a master's degree requirement still in what we're listing? So. Why, like, I don't think masters is a primary qualification for one of our. No, I'm, I'm using this as, as. As manager, maybe. As a, as an. I'm using this as an example to make sure for us to look at our, our, and there's a whole list of recommendations, actually. That, um, came out of that, that I'm more than happy to share, but some cities are doing to sort of think outside the box, um, because it's also. It's pretty discriminatory when you, when you're, you put in all these school requirements, right? Uh, you're leaving out a bunch of qualified people just because they didn't go on to college. And so I think that's one thing that we can take a look at to make sure. And, you know, is there practical experience or is there ability to just train on the job? And so we don't need all these other requirements.
And, and so, Mr. Mayor, I do know our, um, Human Resources Department has been looking at, you know, that specific thing that you're just talking about in addition, you know, to some of. The other kind of creative ways to evaluate, you know, our, our positions and, you know, what we're requiring as far as applications and then the actual process, you know. Once you've turned in and submitted an application, and so just to give an example, um, you know, to your point about the requirements and reducing those, I've had. Uh, great conversations, you know, with our Human Resources Department, looking at some of our positions and. Actually, to your point, being able to make sure that experience is considered, you know, for positions where that is actually applicable, you know. There are, you know, certain positions where, you know, like Scott just mentioned, you know, maybe the city manager, a lot of, you know, public works positions, I know, um, Scott is on here as well, exactly. But I do know that we have been, you know, making progress on some of that, looking at what are requirements, what are barriers to people even turning in applications in addition to education.
And, and, you know, i- if a certain certificate is needed. And we help them get that certificate, they come on the job, you know, uh. Do some on-the-job training and, uh, become full-time once they, we help them complete their course, you know, I think that's the sort of outside, right? Internships and all of that, thinking outside, I think that's what we're gonna have to do from here on out, because I don't think our employment, um, situation is gonna change. We're at. It is what it is, and so.
A lot of what you're, a lot of what you're saying, it's, it's prevalent in the trades.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, they are screaming for bodies in the trades. They're willing to pay for training, all kinds of perks.
So we should think about that too.
We should be thinking outside the box.
Yeah, I mean, for example, I'll use police example, this has been a debate going on since the eighties, and quite frankly, there was a requirement a long time ago, you should have a bachelor's, that's no longer a requirement. So we essentially do teach our police officers, as soon as they get hired, as soon as they're twenty-one, they go to the academy. And so you don't have to have a higher-edged degree to actually go into that field of work. And there are jobs that, you know, are better suited for that. You're right, experience should be something we either teach on the job or do in apprenticeship program or something to that degree. Great. Awesomeness.
So we've made it through all of the identified priorities and my voice can certainly, uh, tell that we have. Uh, one thing I just want to point out really quickly as we come towards the end of the document, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier. Is that in addition to the thirteen priorities that I just branched through, what's also included in the back of the packet or, uh. Overview of, and this is a thirty thousand foot overview of all of the ongoing services that the city provides by departments. So you can take a look through that, um, so just, you know, thinking in addition to what we talked about tonight. These are also activities that require significant staff resources, uh, in addition to costs, um, to implement in the community.
So I have to be a cheerleader a little bit here. So out of thirteen priority level discussions, I think there was maybe a half. Because if you remember the first one, there was two goals under that one. So twelve point five or, you know, over thirteen, we're basically batting ninety-six percent. Right, so if this is baseball, you would be on the all-star team. So I think this is good indication that we've listened to council, these are your priorities. And we have real benchmarks that we can track and show progress. I think also this speaks well to, this is an organization and talented staff that want to meet the needs of the community. Which the council is leading, make sure we have a better future. So I think this is a good platform and framework that we can always point to. If we need to make adjustments, we can always revisit this and talk about it, but this is good direction for myself and the organization. And, and, um, as we get into budget time, it would be nice for you to sh- show where our budget is meeting these priorities too. Right, because that's what it really comes down to. Is your budget a document that shows. Your priorities as, as a council, and so you can sort of tie into these priorities and ongoing work, um, during your. Budget presentation, I think that'd be very helpful. And then it'll come back to that as well, um, to make sure we're, we're still on track and. Um, if we get off track, and the, and the thing is, is, uh, there's always gonna be something that's gonna come up. That is gonna throw us off a little bit, right? I mean, who could have thought we're gonna be into pandemic and all of a sudden we're gonna have to do all this other stuff? Um, so I, I know things will come up, but, you know, as things come up, it's always good then to say, okay. This is gonna be new staff resources time, budget expense. We're gonna have to look at our priorities and say, okay, what, where are we pushing off? What, what, what do we need to do?
So throughout the document, which is fantastic, by the way, it's amazing. Um, it talks about the FTEs required for each of the priorities. And, you know, up and down, depending on how fast we pursue certain things. But does the amount of staffing that is outlined as needed by these thirteen goals line up with what we have, with the rep and file? Or is it more than we have?
So just as a reminder, um, the department directors were asked to assess it if no additional staff were, were added.
This assumes more difficult tasks, so all these FTEs sort of sounds like what we have today.
And one more addition, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reminding me on this. So if you notice, as you go through this document under each of the priority areas, and right now we're under priority. AI for environmental stewardship projects. Each project, um, for all of the benchmarks, there is a number associated with it. And the idea being that as we progress through the work plan in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, we'll be able to report out on what's been accomplished. On a year basis and whether, you know, we've kind of met that benchmark, and that also provides an opportunity for staff to say, hey. You know, here is the reason we didn't, you know, another chocolate came down the conveyor belt and we had to pick it up and we had to stick it in our hat. Uh, or eat it or wrap it, right? And so that allows us that conversation and also that accountability to come back and, uh, talk about the progress we've made on the work plan.
Anything else from staff?
I think this has been a great exercise, and I'm just wondering if we can keep this as a living. Adaptable document that's just gonna take us way into the future. If we just keep updating as we go along and tweaking and.
I, I do think it is important, um, every year, you know, maybe probably around a retreat time to see. You know, here, here are our priorities, here's the process we made our priorities, are there any new priorities? Uh, so on and so forth, and so we can continue to keep this document, uh, going forward and add, subtract, whatever as, as it, as we go. Yeah, the idea would be to say, are we still on track? Are we still the priorities? If not, let's have that discussion. Provide an update on how we are doing with our priorities, celebrate those successes and move forward. Okay. Well, after gaining five pounds from eating chocolates, we've reached the end, end of our agenda. So without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Do you back out Mikey and the chocolate?
Yeah.
Take care. I didn't need the other five thousand calories.